We've gone live. I would like to call this a revision of the County Brian Beck Planning Board to order. There are a number of modifications in the meeting agenda. We have had a request from Mr. Baker, and we'll get to that, to postpone the continuation of his public hearing to September 16th. Cheryl Reese has not submitted anything yet in terms of the garage. She came in too late, so she will be on our August 19th meeting.
She did submit that question.
But it was too late, so she will be on August 19th. Rock Ledge has requested that we move their public hearing to September 19th. There's still, there's nothing new that has been submitted, so they have things coming up. So, we have, those are the changes in the agenda. Could, I think we've all had a chance to review the July 15th regular meeting minutes? Could I have our motion to approve?
Second.
Second. Any amendments or modifications? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
It's under your hand, this, I think we're good. Okay, in terms of correspondence and announcements, the only thing, we were, at some point, we haven't had a fall training session yet for the planning board. We did our training on short-term rentals, and we were thinking, does anyone have any suggestions of what they might like to see for a training session for this autumn for the planning board?
Well, Edna has a one that she's always had. It was a discussion with John Lyons about what the, what authorities the planning board has, and what controls that.
Okay, okay. Any other suggestions?
Yeah, I, I've had a number of plans over the last couple of years that, I quite like plans that involve what I would call cultural landscapes. And I think, let me just say that we have moved forward a draft historic preservation recommendation to the town in terms of the creation of some oversight committee comparable to the Conservation Advisory Board that would be available for referrals and advice in terms of historic preservation issues. And that would cover, that would cover historic preservation in the broad context of buildings, landscapes, archaeology. But I think we all, I feel we don't have sufficient training, particularly in the cultural landscape aspect of it. So, you know, I think it would be worthwhile to look around and see if there's anybody that could come in and talk to us about what constitutes a cultural landscape, how do you approach it, how do you treat it, whatever, there's some management guidelines. So, I'd be willing to work with some folks to try and identify availability of people who could create for us an in-house, an in-house training session.
And I'd like to second that because I feel so strongly about preservation of the resources that there are in this community, so I, I'm in support of what she suggested and all she suggested.
Would you like to ask Kathy and Amelia to try and see if they can put something together for us for this autumn in this town?
Sure.
I don't think it precludes, I think having a smaller work session with John regarding your question can be accomplished as well.
I was promised that by John.
Well, we can call up on that.
I will remind you of this promise, because I don't, I guess we've got more than one training session, we certainly do, you know, just that...
They both sound very worthwhile.
Before you go through all that, it would be a good idea to consult with the town and see if they really want that.
Really want what?
If you ever build an exercise in the city, you don't have an interest. It weighs in a lot of energy.
All right, we'll, we'll hold back and...
Amelia, were you thinking of that as an advisory board kind of situation, or...
We were. We were not, as it's been said to the board now, I mean, it's been through a review process with a subcommittee, and it is not looking to be a recommendation that includes certificates of appropriateness or anything like that. It would be comparable to the way we relate to the Conservation Advisory Board. I don't think of every board agreeing, not because it's...
You really want another board, a committee, yes, a board?
What's, well, we're trying to sort out what the difference is.
We're just...
We don't know what the difference is.
It don't really, I think, especially if we have another board.
Are you, are you going, we then coordinate specific site visits with that, with that board?
But if, if it had a resource on it, it would, was, that we wanted to have reviewed from that perspective, and it would be purely advisory.
Okay. And what constitutes history, how, how...
Well, actually, it's defined in the, I mean, it will come to this board for review. You will have a chance to look at it. Generally speaking, it's operating at a 50-year level, that's the typical sliding scale.
50 years, good work.
May I just ask, when there, it has been considered to get a, to have on hand the appropriate consultant, who is somebody who has true knowledge and experience, so that if he is appointing on something, it's not just opinion. You know, I worry about, where are you going to find expertise to have on this poor committee or board?
Well, since, since it's my background, I think the same, I'm thinking the same question could have been asked at the beginning in terms of a conservation advisor, where are you going to find the expertise?
I, I think Kathy and I could probably identify several people in the town that we believe have expertise in this field that could be appointed. The, the draft that we prepared listed certain credentials and expectations in terms of backgrounds of the people you would be looking for, so it wouldn't be like the first five people that raise their names. You would have to demonstrate some knowledge of the field. But I think to some extent, the dialogue that's happening here supports my belief that we could all use training in this area, because it's a field that's, that's not particularly, that not a lot of people have experience with.
I would be very much in favor of these board, or our board, to have more expertise in understanding, that makes a lot of sense.
Well, that's where we're at right now, because we're only asking, well, Kathy's volunteering to help me see if we can identify people that are knowledgeable in educating us. And let me make clear that the review process for the document that's been submitted back to the town will take its own course. It's a separate initiative, and really, while it has some relevance to moving forward or not moving forward, I also think this training workshop will help us be in a better position to evaluate what we're looking at in that proposed board.
Is there an opportunity for us to have one of our work sessions in that?
Yeah, I, well, I think what we hope is eventually when it comes back, when it starts going out for review, it will audit and review to this board, and I think we ought to have a workshop around it, and we ought to have...
Well, I mean, in terms of us being brought up to speed into what we should be looking for...
Yeah, well, it would be nice if this kind of thing preceded, you know, our review of anything that's being proposed on a larger scale, so. But I, I'm not thinking that anybody's going to rush ahead with the, this historic reservation proposal. I think it's going to take its time, like lots of other things do in town. But am I clear that everybody is okay with us trying to identify a person that can conduct a workshop?
For a training session for us.
That's all we're talking here.
Very good.
And you will talk to John Lyons regarding following up with this?
I will be.
Of approving the next...
Yes.
Good call.
Let's do it. Aye.
I'm sorry?
With Gretchen, sir.
Oh, yes. Can we have, do we have a motion to do that? Second? All in favor?
Aye. Very good.
Okay, we're ready for our first, for public hearing. Jeff Baker has requested that we postpone continuation of his public hearing to September 16th. However, since it is scheduled for tonight, if anyone is here who'd like to speak tonight on that particular application, Mr. Baker is certainly welcome to do so. Clearly, there will be another opportunity on September 16th to do so, since we're leaving a term of public hearing until then.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
What are we expecting when he does come back?
He said he wanted to put some documents together.
What does that mean?
He did not explain, I don't know.
And there was a recommendation on the table at the last meeting that I would reiterate the vote on his application, or if he requested, we allow an extension so that he can come back with an alternative location of our house.
Correct.
Those were the options, if I remember correctly.
Well, perhaps that's what he's going to do, because he hasn't identified specifically what he's going to do.
I got it.
So, I think we just thought it was a big issue by Park, we can extend it to the 16th, and at that point, I think we're going to be taking action anywhere, wherever comes up, I think at that point, we'll be in position to take action on the resolution. So, can I have your motion to continue the public hearing, Mr. Baker, to September 16th?
Motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Uh, oh, time for our next public hearing. This is Cheryl Reese, this is site plan, special use permit, constructed garage in front of the house. The information required, recall, the original site plan was deficient in terms of the dimensions and whatnot that it had on it. New site plan was submitted, but not in time for tonight's meeting. So, what we'd like to do is continue her public hearing to August 19th until the day that's appropriate for that. Could I hear a motion to do so?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Okay, our next public hearing is not scheduled for five minutes, we have one other new business for Mansour, by Forsyth Kinderling's Drive, site plan, special use permit, rent and permit to put in a pool. If you're here for that tonight to just present to us, you could do that now, and you get to go home early.
Okay.
This is a one-time offer.
I'm taking it. Deal. I think we've all got before, we've got a little bit of a wetlands thing going on, we have an easement off of a waterway tributary, and we're looking to put in an in-ground swimming pool, gunite. Our goal is not only to build a pool to make the backyard more functional, but is also to raise the grade in the backyard so that during heavy storms, things like that, that the backyard doesn't flood as much as it does now. In the meantime, while during construction, after construction, mitigating so that there's no erosion into the tributary, or tributary, and maintaining the, maintaining it as it is, and not causing any harm to the wetlands.
Okay. Anyone have any questions? Could we have a panel?
I'll go first.
Okay. Carol?
Well, just looking at that, I'm not quite seeing whether wetland intrusion is in the...
There's no wetlands on the actual map, but we do show a 20-foot wide drainage easement. There's a stream that comes through here, so from the center of the stream, our proposal is to be more than 20 foot outside of the easement with the swimming pool.
There's no 50-foot buffer zone for this wetland?
I'm showing nothing on any federal wetland websites or anything like that.
And this is an intermittent stream, or...
It's intermittent, yeah. Like, right today, if you were to go out there, there's nothing there. If you go there in the springtime, or late fall, after heavy rains, you'll see some flowing water for sure.
And is there any reason why this wetland wasn't collated with a buffer zone, or anything else?
I'm not sure.
Is this an unusual situation, Michael?
It is unusual, I mean, as an intermittent stream, very often happens itself without a buffer around the stream itself.
Well, that's why they called for the 20-foot easement, which is marked on our survey.
Right, that was, I think, part of the original subdivision done way back when, prior to any, prior to rent and regulations and things like that.
Sure.
So, it was, it was a different situation back then. I think the requirement for rent and permit now is that there are buffers which go beyond the 20-foot, and that's why the permit, I think, is being required, but the CEO felt the permit was required for that.
I understand that. I think there is some, I don't know if there is, you guys tell me, but I feel like there is some grandfathering in somewhere along the lines, but we're trying to do the right thing.
Exactly.
You know, we're, we're all trying to work together here, and right now, if, in the springtime, from, you know, March until middle of May, the backyard is muck.
Yeah.
There's just, there's just no drainage in the backyards, all clay, and what we're proposing is with the pool is to bring the pool up higher than existing grade, bring in some bank run fills, some drainable fill, to put in in the area to make the backyard more useful for the children, who, they have a swing set there and things like that already that they can't really play on in certain months. Just, just overall, to do better for the property.
I think the, the script you just gave basically is why, why I think the rent and permit is being required, because it's any day that's to a least a portion of the year, and it does have a stream running through it.
Sure.
I think that that's pretty much what the thinking was that had you here before us tonight, right?
Yeah, but just when you, when you look at the federal and state wetlands maps, it doesn't necessarily show that property as a zone, but what we do have is we do have the drainage easement, which is what we're trying to follow to appease the town.
Yes.
You know, and, and the stream, because we know that it hooks up to something bigger, and we want to preserve everything the same time.
So, that's why I think you're before us.
Okay.
And is that dotted line, outlined, is there a relative to the septic field, I can't read that clearly?
This septic line that runs right here...
No, the, that's, I reckon angle of area, not in the lines.
This is existing play area.
Oh, play area. Where's the septic system?
Yeah, that's front.
Okay.
Everything well set, well, well is over here, septic in the front.
That's there.
You know, so, you've got our, our setback line...
And you say that's a 20-foot line?
20-foot line, and we went off of the, the edge of the bank.
So, if there were a buffer zone, it would be, it would encroach on the corner of that pool you're showing?
No, because this is our 20-foot line right here.
No, no, I said if there were a 50-foot buffer zone...
If there were a 50-foot, we'd be encroaching, yeah. But I just don't know where that 50-foot will come in, since it's not on any of the current maps that I've looked at.
I imagine it would be 50 feet from the center of the stream.
You know, but we're doing our 20-foot off of the bank, not doing the center, you know, we're...
All right.
We'll track that down.
Okay, great.
Other questions?
Yeah, just a few maybe clarifications. Given that the creek is located where, where are we telling you putting the pool pump and associated chemicals, things like that, are they toward the house?
Okay, well, a couple things. All energy efficient equipment, we're saltwater pool, minimal chemicals, we've got a chemical controller on the pool. Equipment is to be housed over here at this small woodhouse shed edition part off the back, so we have it plenty far away from the wetlands. There's no backwashing, it's a cartridge filter system, so the only time that they would be draining the pool is in the wintertime, at which point they would run a hose with a submersible pump to the front of the yard to drink the pool down, the 12 inches that needs to moisturize the pool in the off-season.
You said a saltwater pool?
Yep.
And what is draining all that saltwater due to the local vegetation?
Nothing. Nothing. Your ocean water is 33,000 parts per million salt. Our saltwater pool is about 3,200 parts per million.
What's the purpose of the saltwater pool?
Salt makes chlorine, the purest form of chlorine. So, your typical chlorines that you have today with the tablets and the granulars, they have a bunch of additives in them, which is what bleaches the clothes, creates harshness on the skin, dryness of the hair. So, what we're doing is we're taking sodium chloride and turning it into sodium hyperchloride through electrolysis and making it purest form chlorine, to which point you can have a regular chlorine ingredient in the pool, swim underwater with your eyes open, it doesn't burn. You splash the water out onto the planters, doesn't kill the plants. You know, we've made it as pure as possible, and we use the least amount as possible to sanitize the pool, and it's all done with chemical controllers.
So, if this stream were to come up and all this saltwater were to mingle with the rest of it, there would be no detrimental effect to the rest of the stream bed, to the habitat?
Not in my professional opinion, but I don't know how the two would integrate. Pool wouldn't necessarily...
Well, if the whole area, you said the whole area floods, would it be able to bring it quite far enough, I mean, and the water's made of...
Well, then I think the water would, that the pool water or anything else, but the stream water. If the stream water level came up that, it would have to come up about 2 foot.
Okay.
Which would have a much bigger impact than just mixing with the pool of the local properties. But, like I said, we're using minimum salt content, and I haven't seen or had any literature that says that it does harm to ecosystem around it.
And what you described, that would be about one tenth the saltiness as a notion?
Yeah.
Okay. So, there wouldn't, there wouldn't be a taste of salt in that water?
It would taste like a teardrop, if you'd ever cried.
Yeah, but it doesn't...
But, yeah, very minimal, very minimal.
Are you good?
Yeah.
Are there any other things, are there any other elements proposed on the site that don't exist today? We talked about where the structure would be, a pop is going to go, and all that stuff, is that existing addition on the house?
Correct, yep, that's all existing.
And then around the pool, is there any kind of proposed paving or pavements or anything? It's going to be grass on the wall?
Mm-hmm. And the only thing else that we have, which you can see with drawing, is we have some mitigation on the slopes going back to the stream, but we'll put in some sedge, some plants to hold and retain the hill and to help mitigate any heavy rainfall and drainage from making erosion happen.
And you said the soil is all clay, what will you do with, what will you take out for the, for the pool?
Truck it off. Bring in bank run.
How much height do you think you'll add?
We're at 18 inches at the furthest point of the pool. So, right here, 12 to 18 inches at the furthest corner from grade.
And how is that relative to the foundation of the house?
Foundation, the grade at the foundation of the house...
How, how, the top of the, the top of the pool to the top of the foundation of the house?
It's going to be lower.
About how much?
I'd say 18 inches to 2 foot.
Do you know how much material is going to be bringing in to raise that level back where you want to raise it up, how much bank run, how many cubic feet we're talking about?
About 120 yards.
120 yards. And in terms of excavating for the pool, you know, do you have an idea of how much that's going to be?
Taking out the hole for 15 by 30, approximately 110 yards.
And will you be reusing that material?
No, it's our intention to get rid of that material, place oils.
So, I just wanted to check on your application again. The special use permit for major excavation, I mean, there's more than 200 yards of material is being discussed, even...
That was a part of the question. Plus the 200 yards.
Well, actually, you're taking 110 out on site, and you're bringing 110 in also. So, basically, 220 cubic yards of material is being moved out.
Okay.
So, I'm assuming that's what the special use permit probably is for, is for major excavation. The permits are all done concurrently, the rent and permit, and any other permits in the site, are they all done concurrently?
Okay.
Just making sure we're covering it.
Got it.
Do you have any interrupting?
Yep, I'm good, I'm on set.
Oh, I'm on set.
Then just two other ones. What type of fence is proposed? And are you putting any gates there? I didn't see any shown on the fence.
Yeah, we have two gates that we're going to propose, we're going to have a gate on this side and a gate right here, and it's probably going to be a stock gate fence, or not stock gate, sorry, a post rail fence.
The, the gate should probably be, the, somehow, on the fence, just to show where they go, so that, you know, where they're at, and that, you know, they would inspect the fence going in. In terms of the type of fence?
Is a post rail fence adequate for a fully closure rail?
Yeah, post and rail, three rail, it's going to have a 1 by 1 inch mesh staple to it, self closing, self flashing gates, whole 9 yards. Typically, what you see is installed in this area. And again, with the fence, we don't typically show gates or get into complete linear footage of it until we go to the town for permit, when we talk to the inspector.
Well, we need to see it, because we have to approve that before we can go to the town.
Okay, so if you want to see the gates on there, we'll show the gates.
All, all the different features on the outside, all the different features that are on the property, any lighting you're going to put in there, any, any, you know, landscape and anything like that that's on the outside, we have to deal with that.
Do we have the pool deck?
There's no pool deck.
Just grass around the pool. Grass, yes, so, so I was actually saying, we had a note saying that there's supposed to be grass around the pool, somewhere on the plans, that would be good. So, adding those, adding the grass and showing where those two gates are.
Okay, what's that area, just, I'm not quite sure, you see the existing house, and then there's several rectangles nested together?
Right here, we have an existing deck.
Okay.
There's a sunken fiberglass hot tub, and then there's a staircase, wooden staircase coming off tracks that comes down to the backyard.
Okay.
And of course, any lighting you're going to put out there?
There'll be lights inside the pool.
Anything, anything outside just for maintenance, things like that?
You're saying some bird flicks?
Yeah. And there's an automatic cover on the pool too, I don't know if you want the specs for that as well.
Just a notification that it's there, just a notification that it's there. Anyone have any other questions this evening? All set? Shall we meet a resolution? I'm getting an out of approval, that'll be okay.
I just have a question, which you can probably answer, just in general.
Sure.
So, the fencing that you're putting on is going out from the house on two sides, is that right?
Right.
So, I mean, I'm just thinking of things I've read in the newspaper, so realistically, if a child can come out of the house unobserved and end up in the pool?
That's the point of the automatic safety cover. So, it's literally this vinyl cover, solid cover, that covers the pool.
Right.
When the pool's not in use, which negates the need for a door alarm or a water alarm when you're using the house as part of the barrier. So, typically, if we're using the house as part of the barrier, and we have a fence going around, there's no cover, we would have a water sensing alarm in the pool, and the back, any door that egresses into that fenced-in backyard would have to have an alarm on. But with the automatic cover, it meets ASTM standards saying that...
Okay, I, I guess what I just didn't understand is that was legal in New York? I, I thought that you...
Yeah, it's in the code.
Okay, may I ask, what is an automatic cover? What's a legal automatic?
It's a, it's a cover that covers the pool with a track system that goes below the stone coping on the top of the pool, so they would walk over to a keypad, put in their, the adult would put in their code, they could press to open the cover, and with a pulley system, track and pulley system, it pulls this cover across the pool.
How does it work if the power is out?
You don't use it.
Well, suppose it's stuck open, I mean, I'm just...
There's suppose a lot of things. Suppose Bob leaves the gate open, and shuts it open with a cinder block, and goes on vacation for three weeks.
Yeah, no, I know.
You know what I mean? So, there's a lot of supposes, but it's, lots keep honest people honest, and we do with common sense.
So, the word automatic just refers to the push button operation?
Push button operation, yeah.
So, you have to remember it close to the game, maybe.
Yeah, which you would want to, because it's 82% energy efficient, so if you're feeding the pool with propane, you don't want to leave the cover open ever, you want to keep it closed.
And what's to prevent the cover from closing when somebody's in the pool?
Well, the keypad needs to be within line side of the pool, so when somebody operates it from the manual switch, they can see the entire surface of the pool and know nobody's in there when they're closing it.
I don't think anyone's sitting on the bottom, you know, thinking about it. I think it's going to be a question for a lot of the board about the safety, whether the board really feels it is safe not having the pool itself fully fenced off, especially if there's small children, things like that. Let's face it, there are reports all the time of accidents happening with small children. Parents turn their, turn their back to a net, and all of a sudden, there's a child in the pool, things like that.
Absolutely.
It's something that I know we take seriously. Our assumption always was that the pool itself has to be completely fenced off so that no one can just walk in there. And granted, someone with a pool, with this would need it automatically closed, but it would be almost impossible for a small child to get into that pool and serve. And I think that's what we try to aim for, I think, as a board, just for the safety standpoint.
Well, us two in our industry, that's why we have automatic safety covers, that's why we push for them, because it's a, it's a backup to the backup to the backup, is what it is. We, we probably build about 10, 12 pools in Brian Beck every year, you know, most of them, 90% of the time, we have automatic covers. We do the six typical installation for all of them. It's in the code book, it's always been passed, but yeah, it's, it's better, this system is better than the door alarm, than the pool water alarm.
All right, we agree with the alarms, getting the alarm is really rather useless.
Well, no, what happens is they install the alarm to get the CO, and then they disconnect it because they don't want to hear it. You know, and so it's unfortunate, but the automatic cover, you know, it forces them to close it because they don't want to throw dollars into the air, losing heat, chemicals, taking in rainwater, things like that, you know, so it saves money, it saves lives.
Where does the rainwater go when the cover's on?
A cover pump is on top of the cover, that cover pump pumps the water in, back into the pool.
So, is the same as the rainwater going into the pool?
Yep.
And it looks like if, I mean, if you did want a fence there, there's no opportunity in that here location to close it. Totally, there's no, there's no space between the pool and the, and the bottom of the stairs.
I mean, I think your safest, if, if you want to push for that and speak to the inspector or whatever, whichever route you guys want to take. But if you saw, if you went out to the backyard and you saw how the deck is established and built, there is rail, a railing system around most of the deck. And if you were really concerned about it, we could bring railing in front of the staircase with a gate on it or something like that. But, I mean, again, it's typical installation to put the fence, use the house as the barrier, have the fence coming off like a horseshoe and automatic safety cover in it, satisfy the U C code.
That's the building inspector's responsibility, not ours.
Okay, correct.
Well, it just got to the point that the buildings, once we approve, whatever we approve of the fencing to go, that's what the building inspector then permanently granted to that point, assuming that hopefully the food doesn't be recovered as you suggest it does.
Correct, yep.
Anything else?
All right, let me read this. The town arriving planning board here at this is bottles and the application by new gen pool specialist Inc. For site control approval, special use permit and a wetland's permit. Uh, respectively for construction of pools in the R C five zoning district. Accepts the application and supporting documents as adequate for initiating a view by the planning board, its advisors and the public. Last class of the post action is type two under secret for which coordinated environmental audit reviews including schedules a public hearing for the application for audios.
September sixteenth.
Oh, September sixteenth. September sixteenth, thank you, at six thirty-five.
Forty-five.
Forty-five. I'll get it eventually. And directs the first undertake and otherwise cause the noticing and posting thereof in accordance with the requirements set forth under town code chapter one two five six one two five seven two and one two five six seven. Delegates planning board members who would like to visit. Sharon? And?
I'll go.
Eric? To conduct a field visit to the project site and report your observations at the time of public hearing. In accordance with town code chapter nine, conservation advisory board reverse the application of the conservation advisory board for review and written comment considering environmental factors. In accordance with Dutchess County Partners Planning Development two three nine zoning planning referral, reverse the application of the Dutchess County Partners Planning and Development for review. Authorizes without prejudice to the information or comment that may present at the public hearing or may arise both, based on both the outside and field visits before the preparation of a working draft of a pool's resolution the planning board's consideration on September sixteenth or as maybe later timing. Could I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Uh, a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Very good, all right.
Right.
Getting touch with Gretchen about getting everything set to go for the public hearing this time.
Thank you very much.
Michael, you mentioned you'd be able to adjust this to the agenda because I see people come in late.
Oh, okay. Um, yes. Uh, what we have tonight, we'll have two, continue two public hearings this evening. One is being moved to September nineteenth as no new information has been received. That's on the rock ledge. September sixteen? I'm sorry, September sixteenth. As we have been informed by the applicant that they have no new information, there's nothing you can look at. They are still in the process of doing the hydrological studies that they were wanting to do for wells and water sufficiency in that area. Those have not been completed yet. Uh, I believe they may have been studied, they have not been continued. So we have nothing new to report. Um, we're going to move the public hearing, but if anyone would like to speak tonight on this topic, they certainly can.
What, what time will be on the agenda on the sixteenth?
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock. Yeah, we're past seven, so if anyone would like to speak to this tonight, they certainly can. There's nothing, we don't know anything new to tell you. There's nothing more to tell you that we haven't already, you know, shared with you. There's nothing more that we know. So that's why this is being moved. The, the public applicants request, so. But, you know, we are, we're opening this up and you're more than welcome to speak tonight. I have concerns, things about you as well. Would anyone like to? Okay. Could I have a motion to continue this public hearing on September sixteenth at seven P M?
So move.
Second? All in favor?
All right.
Very good, thank you. And, uh, I appreciate you all coming. I wish there was some device we had to inform everybody if something's being postponed, if we don't know, if we haven't heard anything new, if there's nothing more to share. Uh, you should always feel free to give a call. Gretchen's more than happy to answer the questions you might have, so that you do know whether or not there's something new that has come up, that's something new that maybe you're not aware of. And we're more than happy to share that.
Thanks.
Okay, moving along to tonight's main events. Uh, we continue the public hearing on K P H two management LLC, D Court LLC, uh, Brimble Badley LLC, and currently North State Home.
It's up.
Inc. Uh, for master plan application. Would you like to, uh, present?
The board, part of the application again, or is it always?
We did go for the last time. I think the action we were going to take tonight, planning board, is we now, we are going to be the lead agencies to this project. We, we're thirty days as the rats and we had no challenge to that particular function. We did have, I think, a couple of questions for additional information. Uh, there was some discussion we've had and I thought that, um, it might be worth, well, bringing it up tonight because we noticed on the, on the latest master plan, we don't have anything addressing this pedestrian overpass as going from the river down to the proposed dock here. If that should be on the master plan.
Well, I've, I know that there was something, I can certainly include that. I know it was originally included on the, on the master plan for just K P H two. Uh, but, uh, as I think we discussed at the last meeting, uh, we did have the opportunity to meet with, uh, North State D E C and all the, uh, agencies involved in the review of that project, you know, that aspect of the project, um, for not only access, but what, uh, D E C and the other state agencies and federal agencies would allow, um, or, uh, basically they wouldn't allow reconstruction of boathouse in the river. And, uh, they were quite, um, frank in saying that it would not be permitted and that the only thing that would be permitted would be some type of platform, a platform on the land area, which is to the, uh, which is to the north where the bulkheads are, where the boathouse was. And then with a, uh, connection to a plug and dump up from that platform. And that's it. So obviously, access would be the same as it was before, just with a pedestrian bridge, uh, over the railroad. So I'll certainly, if the board wishes, I'll include that, uh, that detail on this, uh, on this master plan application. And I can also speak to, you know, I can provide some details relative to our, our meeting with all the agencies with regard to what seemed to be approvable, um, by them.
Down by the river.
In the river too.
So what you would oppose putting on would be, to the best of your knowledge, the maximum that the state would prove?
Uh, yes, it's, uh, not much. So, so right here, and so, um, if you recall, uh, previously, like the plans that I submitted, um, with regards to land on the west side of the tracks, um, title information that I had, only had, uh, Aster had, it was called a commerce grant. It was located right here. It was only a thirty by fifty area. Uh, but in making the application, uh, for this particular aspect of the project, it went to O G S. And O G S actually had additional information. I always thought Aster, Aster just built this. Uh, but actually he had, he had obtained a letters patent in order to do that. Uh, so this, this land is now, is now, it was included in the application, but it was actually, Aster did deal with it, with the state of New York for this particular piece of property. This thirty by fifty area was actually just a commerce grant. And so there were two different types of grants, commerce grant and those for beneficial enjoyment. And commerce grant, you, you need to convert that into something that if you're going to acquire the land. And so, uh, going through that process with O G S also, uh, you know, I prepared a plan, uh, that I can include as part of the master plan application. I, I prepared a plan, uh, for a purchase in Eastman, uh, to the state of New York. I've already received comment on it from O G S, so I'll include that. But it would just be, so Melody, just to answer your question directly, just a, a, a platform here, um, uh, connection to the platform and then just a seasonal floating dock, um, with, uh, D E C was really specific. No disturbance to the better bands at all, nothing. Uh, no stabilization, uh, no additional bulkheads, nothing. Just stay on the land and float some of that, that's it.
And how do you anchor with the product?
It's anchored to here. It's anchored on the land, and so it's anchored to this platform.
Okay, so it'd be a hinge strike?
Yeah, yeah, hinge, hinge, uh, gangway down, down to a floating dock.
And then that'd have to be dismantled every year?
Yes, it app, yeah, because, as you know, in the winter.
Yeah, yes, I see.
Yeah, I see, just rip it right out.
How did you see water there?
Uh, it's about, well, it depends on, uh, because I did a, a bath metric survey and so obviously it depends on the tides. Uh, but, uh, and it's, it's anywhere from a four to eight feet deep through here.
And what is the tide variation?
Uh, the tide change is maybe two to three feet. I just, that's just, you know, I, I, the plan that I have, I, um, all the title information is, is available. And so I, I related it to our elevation data, so it's all on the plan and they'll provide that. But it's generally, um, it's generally a couple, you know, two to three feet, somewhere in there between mean low low and mean high high.
So they can then bring their launch up to this platform and, and use that as their dock and?
Yes.
And it'll be deep enough at low tide to where it's silly enough to drive?
Yeah, and that was the idea. And so I think there was, you know, four feet, four and a half feet of water at low tide, uh, to, uh.
So what time for boats, docked?
I'm, I'm not aware of any specific, other than what we've already discussed.
So they're still planning on having the historic launch, what the?
That's, that's still, that's still planned.
Okay, and what is going to happen is that the launch and the dock in one of them?
Uh, storage somewhere.
Somewhere. Not a problem.
Another question that I have, and it's a concern I have, I, I don't know if anyone else in the planning board shares it with me. But in terms of the pond on the property, we've been discussing this back and forth.
Right.
And my concern was that if it were to remain on the master plan, even if, say, if there was a group of members who didn't wish it, that this is something I could be able to discuss. By having it on the master plan, should we prove the master plan, that would be construed as conceptual approval of putting the pond there.
Okay.
And I was going to suggest, since, I guess you said that they're probably going to wait on doing that anyway, they don't want to do all the hydrological work, they don't want to do all the engineering work to potentially plan to do that.
Yes.
Would it not be better and easier, uh, to delete that from the master plan at this point? You can always come back and amend a site plan, something of that sort, if you truly decide to do it and go through all the different steps that would be necessary to remove something like that. Um, I would think to have something in there that the planning board perhaps felt didn't belong there, it was probably a significant change in the landscape, which they felt conceptually they didn't wish to approve. Um, I don't want to put the impression of conceptual approval, but then the, thinking that's something we'd then go ahead and do, if you have anything they wish to go ahead and do. That's just my feeling about that at this point. I wouldn't want the overall master plan to be held up by something of that sort, considering that I said, I'm speaking for myself, but the concern that I have, and I don't know if the rest of the board feels that way, but it's something that.
I'd certainly love to hear from the rest of the board, but also, one thing, Jim, I just, and, uh, we're fine to do that because I spoke to the, to the applicant about that specifically. I just don't want any, uh, concerns about segmentation.
Exactly.
All right, so, uh, because we're fine to come back with a, you know, a new, or it's, uh, a revised site plan or amendment to the master plan, whatever is the appropriate way to do that. I just want to, uh, finally taking that off and not considering it now, but I just want to leave the door open, uh, to be able to come back in the future if it's just to do that, so.
The record, the record would show, we've discussed this.
Okay.
It's not like you have the hell of a possibility, but.
Okay.
Um, I agree with Michael, I think there's, there's still tremendous amount of ideological issues associated with it. We know that, you know, we're worried about erosion, we're worried a lot. I'm not a fan of it at this point, and also not a fan from the perspective it is a significant new addition to a historic resource.
Understood.
Also, you know, I have, I, I have major reservations about the introduction. I, I think, I prefer the move ahead of the master plan and how it be included, understanding that we, that you've been very frank about this is, this is a proposal under discussion with the line, I, I don't think you're fooling us, there's, you know, it's not like.
Okay. That's fine. I'll, I'll remove any reference to, to the plans and actually, I thought I already removed it from E A F, but I'll, I'll review that. Uh, because, uh, you know, there were, in the, in the E A F, there were, there were specific items that, that I originally did to address the, you know, to the construction excavation or anything related to that. So I'll, I will go through, uh, all materials and I'll remove that and, um, what's the appropriate way to resemit, like, do you want? Or one of these?
I, I don't think that's necessary. I think just, um, just, um, just.
Can I, can I do it with a narrative? The plans are easy.
Just, just the narrative in the plans is all.
Plans are, plans are an easy change and then obviously to the E A F.
Yeah, and because basically, since it's not building, it's not having any impact and that would be, you know, picked up in the E A F.
Okay.
So I think that if the narrative is just the plan and how it is certainly, certainly not for me, I think there'd be more than that.
I have every request. There is so much known on here and if you look at that site plan, there are so many lines. I would really like to see in a color, be any stream shown, you know, in a color. And I'd like to see the wetland boundaries in a color so I can clearly understand development is going on in a wetland, where it is in relation to the basin, et cetera. Is that possible?
It is, is, like, can I also, Ed, can I also consider maybe additional plans, right?
Additional sheets?
Yeah, additional sheets, uh, to try to clarify some things. Maybe I'll break out some of the, uh, it is, it's a busy plan. And so if I, if I choose to, you know, break out some and then just identify, uh, you know, maybe, and, and in all of the, in all the sheets I create, I will show the wetland boundaries, I will show the streams, but maybe there'll be one that'll just show the miniature railroad and.
Yeah, it's, it's just that, right now, I'm interested in trying to determine, is this a wetland boundary or is this a miniature train or what is it? So that's why I am suggesting a color to show wetland boundaries and streams, so we know where they are.
Okay, that's a reasonable request.
Can you clarify something for me? The existing road, Off River Road to Astor Ports is being converted into a sort of bulk car type road?
Only a certain, only the one section. So it's a section right here. You get, you get right here. That section of the driveway, that, that crosses through here and comes over like this because the new entrance to Astor Ports is going to go this way, so it's just that section.
That will not be used by cars or trucks.
That's correct. And then, but it's then, because there's also, uh, you know, as the, as we, um, further develop the miniature railroad, then this, this section of, of a rail bed is now used for cementments of vehicles. That's no longer possible when the miniature railroad is in place. So now, part of it is, that's going to be included in.
That service for?
Is the service, the service driveway.
So any service vehicles or delivery vehicles or waste removal vehicles will all be used in the service road and not follow that road?
That, that's, that's correct, or the main entrance.
So now, now go along the driveway that used to be the driveway.
No, it's, it's all different. Yeah, you have the service drive, you know where, when you, when you, let's see, there's a, um, there's that stream right? that stream right here, right, right in this location, this, this was, that was one of the first applications that I brought to the board, it was replacement of the twenty mile culverts under the railroad. Right there, you know, it splits, there's a gate, there's two, there's, actually, there's three gates, there's a gate, there's, there's a gate here, there's a gate to Astor Courts, and then there's a gate to Teahouse there. That gate furthest to the south, that, that's where the service road will be, and it's going to be both, it's dual purpose, service road, you know, act as the location for all the underground utilities that will go to Astor Courts.
I meant from there on up to, to River Road?
Yeah, to River Road, it, it will be the same road, okay. It will be the same road. And I know that with regard to, you know, correspondence that have come, that's come in from other involved and interested agencies, specifically DEC and the Army Corps of Engineers, this, we're approaching this project so that we won't be required any permitting from them, so we're going to, in that, like, speaking of the service drive, going to span that, going to put another bridge in, we'll, we'll span that section of the stream. The same thing with, there's, there's existing culvert right there underneath what's going to be the service drive, that will be replaced. The same thing with any wetlands, there'll be no disturbance to the wetlands. There'll be applications to this board for working within the adjacent area of the, but we're staying away from the wetlands. And the same thing, DEC did bring up this section right through here, so it's Astor Court, it's actually state wetland, and so I'll have, and I don't feel that we're anywhere close to doing any work at Teahouse with that, but I will have it planned, and obviously any, the idea is just to avoid any permitting with New York State DEC and the Army Corps of Engineers.
I have a question for the board at this point. Questions or comments from the public?
Just a question regarding Seaker, I think we're okay in terms of our process. Secret segmentation is where we break it up into individual secret duty processes, not look at everything as a whole, so if we keep it off now, we'll come back and do a master plan, a little later, a little bit, because when we look at that in larger picture of the entire plan, I think we're okay. I'm not a lawyer, I'm not a secret role, but I think we're okay with the process.
And I think with that, we'll be questioning this, asking if this has been done, so I think she has, but there's been no attempt to segmentation. I feel comfortable with myself, so. Other comments at the moment from the board? I guess we'll be waiting for the updated EAF, ready to go to the number two, part two and part three.
Okay.
I think that will be sort of the next step for the board. Of course, we'll keep the public hearing open. When do you think you'll have the different plans that Ed has been discussing, and updated EAF ready to go?
So obviously, I'd like to move it along, so the next meeting of this board is on the nineteenth, correct?
Mm-hmm. Okay, I was giving a quick, never mind, forget what I was doing, EAF is the...
What's a sufficient, I'd like to be able to have materials in so the board can consider, you know, starting the process going through part two, treatment, EAF for the nineteenth, so when, when would you need materials by?
How do you feel about that? I think that's in two weeks, we have a very light schedule for the nineteenth at this point, so it might be a pretty, we have to be here, so it might be a good time to begin that process. It'll be two weeks? Okay, so...
That's why I, this is why I'm...
How, how does September sixteenth look for you? Okay, so you do that? Okay. Could I have a motion to continue this public hearing through September sixteenth at...
We have one at six forty-five, we have one at seven, so do you want to do one in between, or do you want to do seven thirty?
Pardon?
Seven fifteen, how about seven fifteen? We'll look at that, that way.
So move.
Second?
Second.
On favor?
On.
Very good, thank you.
Just another question from the board, so in developing these additional plans for the board review for the master plan, I'd also like to be able to develop more detailed plans that the board can see for specific applications. So is it, would it be, and I'd like to be able to submit that material.
There's no problem with that.
Okay, great.
That way it won't happen, so when the specific projects come up, at least, for the app basis, or that's what I'm talking to speak into as well.
Okay, great.
I think if we have, you know, when Fabiana's over here, it's, sometimes people change their mind, so...
Understood.
I, I, I don't want you to have to do extra work, or us to have to do extra work, so...
Understood.
What you're submitting is plans, you should feel confident that that is the plan you're going with?
Yeah, I've been actually working very hard at that, and so, and I'm not, and I'm not trying to be presumptuous in preparing these plans in any way, I just, you know, we're looking at, like, certain projects to try to be able to do some work for it this year before the, before the cold weather hits, and so that's, and that's the reason for that specific request.
I, it, it works for you, I think that's fine.
Okay, great.
Mark, would the, would the foot access to the other side of the railroad be docked? Who's property is it, will that land on, and that DEC is involved in that, or?
Well, it's actually, it, it's, it's all, it will be all of KPH two's property, because you're exiting on, you're, you're on the east side of the tracks, it starts on KPH two, you go over CXS property, and then you're going, you're going to land on a property that, let's just say, to be acquired by the applicant from the state of New York, so it will be...
Okay, so once they acquire that, then the DEC doesn't have anything to do with what that foundation of that footbridge looks like, or?
I wouldn't say that, but, you know, I'm sure there will be some input from DEC regarding, and there, we did have discussion about that, where were, where were we going to land on the west side of the tracks, and, you know, obviously, the idea is, is to land here, not on, so this, there's CSX right there, on those coal mines, and so it will land here.
Mark, thank you.
Thank you very much.
We'll see you on the sixteenth.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, yes, thank you. We have one more resolution relevant to this application, just acknowledging we are going to be lead agency, accepting the order of that, you gave the tax.
Opportunity.
Opportunity. Demand's opportunities, no man's burden. Oh?
Sixteen.
Sixteen. All right, here we go. Draft resolution assuming status as secret lead agency. The counterparty planning board upon distribution of notice of intent to serve as secret lead agency to other potential involved agencies on July first, two thousand nineteen, distributed by Mark R. Fluminski, B E L S B C, and upon passage of thirty calendar days, receive no communication from any potential involved agencies expressing dissent to the planning board serving as secret lead agency hereby declares itself the secret lead agency for coordinated environmental quality review of Mill Road master plan in phase development promoted by Keyport LLC, KPH two management LLC, Stringle Valley LLC, and term of persons own C L Inc. for building and site improvements at said locations and tax and parcel numbers given. Could I have a motion to approve? Second?
Second.
On favor?
On.
All right. We now come to our final item for the night, it is the continued public hearing for the Grassmere Farm project.
This is a, this is a, an amended site plan, one of the ten plans we had approved earlier. This document we created, actually Jim's request, this, this shows, this is an interesting document, between what the existing footside plan is and what we're asking to have amended, so I thought for the purposes of tonight, to be able to just talk about what the changes are. We've also got the full design presentation, which shows a lot of the topic imagery, we've shown that to the board in the past, it is worth, I'd like to go back to that again, we're happy to do that, that's, that's up to you guys. But really, in terms of, in terms of the overview, for people that have the property, this is the manor house, and this is still farm, but down here, these are the existing structures around the property. What we've done is, we've made a few additions, it's a, it's a larger build up. First, the approved, the approved site plan was for phase one, of what was to be an incrementally increased project, so that included thirty-nine log units. What we're showing now is fifty-six market structures, which was contemplated with the original review and the original plan, but we're going to do some more of them upfront. We've also added some tents down here, which were not included as part of the original plan, but just, should I get the...
The red, the red section.
Okay, so the, this right here is the, is the main project entrance, this comes out with Blue Nine, it's an old estate entrance, we're going to be expanding it from a single lane to lanes. This comes down through here, what we've added, this is an addition, is an entry facility, so it's sort of residential in scale, it's going to be like a small house, sitting next to a small pond, but all of the guests that arrive on the property come here. They then, this is the parking area up here, this, we did use them, we bought this ten acre piece right here, this is all going to be screened off, but basically, cars are going to get put here, guests sort of start the experience here, and then get taken to, these are all the individual cottages up here, they do around several ponds, which is always a part of the park. These are orchard rooms right here, which are also small, these are attached buildings, but they've broken up into individual units, and then we have some small three houses right here. But the orchard room, the departure from what we showed in the past, those were the shown as individual private cottages that sat out on the lawn. This is a spa building right here, this building had always been part of the plans, it's, that's consistently overlooking the past. The manor house is going to be rehabilitated, which is also always part of the plans. Can people hear me?
No.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yes, thank you.
So, yeah, so these, this is a variation of what we've shown in the past, the end of the spa and gym building here had been part of the plans. What we had in the previous iteration was a pool located up by the manor house, we've moved that down and added a cool house component to it, down here, so that pool got moved from here down there, where it's got a view overlooking, overlooking the fields. Another addition, we've added some small outbuildings around the stone barns, a barbecue area, and a small cinema building, so the barns complex would have some additional barn structures on it. We've also added a small stable, which had ten stalls in it, so that would be for some horses up here, that people could use throughout the property. We've also added this, which is a new water feature, so it's, it's mostly just going to be aesthetic, but it's, it's a lake, so that when people are looking out from the manor house and stone barns, looking out over the fields, there's something that's, you know, some additional visual interest. It also serves as, as a, it's sort of, it's got a relationship with these tents, which are designed to be sort of high-end safari kind of tents, that would have, people probably have their own showers and anything like that, would have power. In terms of the other additions, that's really it, I mean, it's really the same plan that we've shown in the past, or variations of it in the past, but just, we've picked it up a little bit, and we built a little more of that, and we were in a base more plan.
So, are all those dark areas lakes?
This is, this is the wetland right here.
A wetland?
Yeah, that's, that's a wetland right here, and this is a wetland right there. So, and these are the state ponds right now, so basically the...
So those three ponds are existing?
These three ponds exist, and this would be what is added.
And that, oh, to the left of the orchard there, that's another wetland?
Yeah, that's, that's another one, and that, that, this feeds down into the Landsmen Kill right here, and basically, there's a spring that feeds this top estate lake, and it runs down through here, and then this is sort of the spill off from that forms this wetland out here. And then this is, this, this right here is just, it's, I mean, some water probably washed out from Blue Nine, but it's, it's, some water is back in the woods back through here, and I know we're not impacting any of that.
It's starting to look like a round of lakes there, or something?
No, 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 I, I, yeah, we probably shouldn't have had, we probably shouldn't have included just the wetlands, because it's confusing, but yeah, the, the lakes are these three, and then this is the one to be added.
I have a few final questions.
Yeah.
Okay. It looks like a lot, but it's not.
Yeah.
Number one is the map. I know what the map is, I, I know the area, but if I looked at that map and I didn't know the area, where is Mill Road? Where is the cemetery?
Oh, sure.
Where is the bachelor bearing section? Where is your pond? Where is the state KPH, you know, wetland?
I'm not sure which one KPH is.
That's the wetland that goes onto your property, between those lanes, wanting to build, and probably could be helpful too, to show the residents who live along Blue Nine, so we know what's there. I mean, I know what's there.
Yeah.
You know, but just looking at it, don't know what's there.
Yeah, what, what might be helpful, actually, we put this together just because we wanted to show a comparison between what had been approved and what we're, what we're doing now. It might be easier if we can move over to the design presentation, which is more set up, it's a little more user-friendly in terms of, in terms of looking at it, so, yeah. And, you can go.
You might be able to show.
Okay. So, this is, this is the same thing? It's, it's, it's got colors. Yeah, can we zoom in a little bit? I can...
I still have a few other questions, Tim.
Sure, sure, but I'll, I'll use this to acclimate everybody, so everybody knows what's, what's up. This is, this is the existing estate, or the state, this is the estate drive that's in current use. This here, and this is Blue Nine that goes around the property right here, Mill Road basically runs down here, and the other side of Mill Road is, is the Landsmen Kill, and then it crosses underneath the bridge, and then it runs down the side of the property. In terms of the, the wetland that goes down to the Landsmen Kill, that's located right here. These are the three existing ponds, this is the to be created lake right here, and then this is the, this is the area that we would be putting the fence in. Is that acclimate? Is that... Which one?
Is that where the cemetery is?
Oh, yeah, the cemetery, I'm sorry, yeah, I forgot the cemetery, the cemetery is located right here.
Yeah.
Right up there. So, so basically, it's, so there's a whole wooded area, this is where, right here is where the, those power lines are. And so basically, there's, there's the woods, and then there's, then there is the cemetery up here.
Doesn't, I, I think there's that new pond, is it?
We're, we're thinking about, I think probably an average depth of about seven and a half feet, so it would be deeper towards the middle, and then getting shallow, or is it, obviously got the edge?
So it has to be a lot of shallow, what's going to keep it from getting all the concrete?
Yeah, we're going to be working on that.
Yeah, well, there's a couple of things, as Jonathan said, there are two springs that feed the existing upper ponds, and they feed down into a stream that feeds into this pond, so that constant flow of water. And then, at the backside of the stone bars, there's another spring there that feeds down, and will come into the north end of the pond, so it'll actually have two artesian wells that, that feed it, and so you'll always have fresh water, it's not like a farm pond where you have to aerate them.
Fresh water, and where, where would it exit?
Now, there's a, it'll go back to the same exact... I'm scared as the light... So... So, okay, so right now, the, there's a stream that comes in here, and then there's another one that comes in here. The outfall from both of those right now comes right along here, and so the outfall from the pond will be right there.
And those are, those are intermittent streams?
Uh, yeah, well, they're, they're actually seasonal, and they do run, and they are delineated as part of our wetlands delineation. They will be part of our nationwide permit thirty-nine, which is for commercial activities for less than a half an acre of disturbance of water.
Okay, I think to sort of keep things on track here, I think maybe if you're able to ask your questions and answer those...
Sure.
As being along that would be probably helpful.
Sure.
Okay, um, I want to go back up to the, the Mill Road entrance, because when you viewed before us, you had changed it from what's existing here now, and you had moved it over so many feet, and so now you want to have it as pedestrian and also a shuttle.
Yeah.
So, there's, there's actually two points to it. How many shuttle trips do you think there's going to be every day? And, are they going to be going in and out? Why can't they use the Route Nine entrance, number one? And number two, since it's not going to be used for the public, why wouldn't you keep or consider keeping the original entrance where it is?
It, it may be that we can keep these, and that's across my mind, that we might not need to do that modification. If it's our own shuttle driver that's, that's dealing in a small vehicle, they're going to know, they're going to know very well, so that might not be necessary.
Okay, and, um, up where the stable is, um, that, that lot is separate, like that's the ten-acre lot?
Yeah.
Okay, are you going to do subdivision and add that to the others somewhere?
Yeah, we, 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 I, that, we assume that that will be part of the process. What we have to do, too, is sever by option, hundred and fifty acres, so we'll do those two things together.
Okay, so my question then is, um, the, how many parking areas are in that large lot? It's certified by the Cherokee's Bureau, but I couldn't find the number for how many up there in that field.
Yeah.
And number two is, um, does it like to be pervious or impervious?
Yeah, yeah, this is, this is the topic, this is the topic we've, it's very recent here that we did not discuss the same thing.
Well, the easiest part is to talk about the pervious and the impervious. The intent in our design is to have imper, or a pervious pavement in all of the parking stalls. The stalls themselves will be pervious, or get pervious pavement. The drive lanes, because they have to, you know, they get much more traffic, will be regular stall pavement. That lot is a valet lot. When you come into the facility, you don't actually drive and park there. You come in, and a valet takes your car and parks it in the lot, so the lot will be controlled. The lot itself is screened, because the geography actually rolls, and the high point of the site is on, on the west side of where the parking lot is here, and so then, you know, there's natural screening, and we'll do additional screening in there, and then the, the field that we're going to have for the, for the horses will be the part that then goes over to the historic drive, so that it'll give that, it'll blend in, it'll make that parking lot disappear from view along Route Nine. As far as the number of parking spots, off the top of my head, I don't have the exact number in it. If we zoomed in on it, I probably could see the number.
I wasn't there to try to count.
Right there, I think the count was there, so. For that lot, the, the master planners have been tweaking that, that just listed as lot five, and we have to count them all, but, that, that's something, if you need that, we can get that information.
And what's the cart wash for?
Cart wash is a service that, and Jonathan, you can talk about that, because that's a, a service for the facility, so when you drop your car off or valet, before it comes back, it'll...
I think that is all my questions.
Yeah, and, and just, in terms of the shuttle service, I mean, that's going to be created by the green schedule, and the reason, you know, we, I mean, we've been, I, I've heard the comments earlier, people were worried about the access traffic on Mill Road and how the, how the ride would react to that, and, and we've made the modification that it was just an entrance for the public, but in this iteration, we took it further, and really are just limiting that ride for use for basically the hotel staff to run shuttles, which aren't going to be, it's not going to be tour buses, I mean, we're talking about maybe a van, it could even be just S U Vs, but the idea is that if people are arriving in, running, the way, the way up is up more than road and then down the road, it's a lot nicer to just go into the grassmere drive at that point, than having to go all the way out onto Route Nine, circling all around Route Nine, which is more commercial, just the overall arrival experience is a lot nicer. That's why, for that particular use, we thought it was important to keep access to that drive, but really, other than that, we're, we're looking at, and it's just, and even for the, for the shuttle, it's just an entrance.
How do you want to keep the public out?
Well, if we have to do something to, to, yeah, if, if, if it becomes, I mean, we're, we're setting up this whole entrance situation where we have that arrival building, in large part, well, I think it's going to be a very nice way to enter the park of the property, but also, it allows us to control who is coming on and off the property, we're going to know who's there. So we don't want, and security is an issue and a concern, and we're not going to want a situation where people are just coming on the property on the, on the, you know, preventative drive, and we don't know they're there, I mean, that's, that's no good. So if that becomes an issue, then we might have to put a security gate, but, you know, the, the hope was to keep appealing much more, you know, sort of like a lower-key country estate drive, so we're trying to keep that same, but really, most of the, and most of, and, and the, and the surface on that, I know that, that there was a question about that, the surface is, is a chip and seal surface, so it's got a base, the stone is actually there here to the base, so it's not a big rattle, it, it acts like a ham and a gansel, so we won't have to problem with dust coming down. But we, we knew how to script them, and people would be using it in nice weather to, to go back and forth to town, maybe take bikes, using the normal walking trail, and really then the, the only vehicle traveling on the town that really is going to be shown, that can back and forth from the van station, and some of that's just going to be dependent on, on demand, you know, and that's really just going to run off of the, you know, that transcur...
But this Christian sidewalks into town, they don't...
Well, there's a, there's, right now, I mean, there's, there's both narrow, and so there's not a lot of, there's not a lot of, sort of, backing up sides. We, we have talked to the village about potentially, I mean, it's only nine hundred feet between the end of the grassmere roadway and Route Nine, and on the other side of Route Nine, there's a, there's a sidewalk, but the, we have talked to the village about potentially creating some sort of a, a bike lane, using signage, maybe some restriping, which would, you know, accommodate that, that, that's what we need.
And what's the situation we've got with the village water?
Uh, we're working with the, with the, with the village to tap into both village water and, and at the sewer system. There's a, there's a line that's, that's up a little closer to the elementary school, so what we have to do is run a six-inch line to tap into their larger eight-inch line. Some sections of that are already a little larger, some sections that we need to, we need to replace, because they're performance, performance lines. And the village is already in the process of replacing a lot of their water lines, so to some degree, you know, it would be on our dime, but it would be of benefit of all the village also.
So the discussion about the potential sidewalk and the, um, what are the two of the village, are they interrelated?
They, they have, at this point now, made it very clear that they are not.
They're not interrelated?
They are not interrelated.
When do you anticipate having a concrete understanding with the village about those two separate issues?
Well, the, the one, you know, we've encountered, there's, there's some issues with what they originally talked about with restriping and D O P, and how that would all work, so there's, there's some problems that I just don't think they would have been aware of. That's something that we'll, we'll, but in terms of the, in terms of the sewer treatment plant, the, the big thing that we're working through right now is capacity in the plan, and, and so John's got a meeting with, they, they pointed an engineer, John started to work with him, to take a look at how we can increase storm surge capacity at, at the sewer treatment plant.
My question was regarding timeline.
Yeah.
Because obviously, both of those issues are related to your final application.
Yeah.
So what is the timeline for those determinations?
Well, we're probably looking at what, what...
Well, the village has just made arrangements to hire their own engineer for the review, and the very first step will be to get a meeting with them at the sewer treatment plant to talk about the proposal that we are looking at, which is a surge protection tank that will be put on contribution to the system. After that, we have schematic design ready for the forest main, and we have schematic design for the water lines. What I'm imagining is that, once the engineer has a chance to review it, they'll make a recommendation to the village board on the direction that will go on, then we'll ask the village board if they would give us a letter of, of commitment. That letter of commitment will be enough, I believe, for this board to make its secret determination and site plan determination contingent on final approval of engineering drawings that were applied there by their village engineer, because, you know, part of this issue is that some of this is in the town, some of it isn't the village, but we have to get the village to sign off on the systems. So as far as how long that's going to take, I don't, I'm going to try, well, no, I think it would be fairly quickly, because there's...
But you have town board meetings, or those, excuse me, village board meetings, you're going to have to work...
We're, we're probably a month to two months in the process. You know, the, the, the village engineer that they hired is aware of what we're doing, we just have to get a meeting set up, which I have to do as early as next week, and then I would imagine that if they, if everybody's in agreement in the approach that we're taking, then the village board may, you know, resolution on it. For these two meetings, I don't, it's not a thing, or my...
Yeah, I think we, we'd assume that, that this, any approved site plan approval would be continued, would be on the condition, site plan approval would be to be finalized and the overall to be tapped into. So that, that's, that's, at least it's...
I think they're more important to the overall site than, if that's my opinion. I'm, I'm comfortable with how I know what there was initially issues with the village, which is what I think.
Yeah, well, if we had, if we had, if, if for some reason we couldn't resolve with the village, we'd have to go back to what we proposed before, which would be a sort of approval plan, that would require, obviously, us coming back to the planning board for a whole, and the, the site plan with all the information around that, but that would be, I mean, that, that would be the other option, which we'd, we'd rather tap into code services, but one way or another, we obviously do the project, and we need to have, we need to have some sewer, some sewer water, so.
We do have, from the, from the sewer department itself, we have the commitment letter that John sent to me, so that, you have that, I believe, you have that in your file?
I, I haven't seen it, we do have it, I have not seen it.
It was a letter that we got from John.
For the sewer only, not the water?
It's just to say that the, that the sewer district has the capacity to take our flows.
Okay. For both water and sewer?
Well, the water is, is a different letter, that's a letter for, they have the ability to do that, and they have plenty of, that's one thing.
So, but you have that in that letter as well?
And, and so, like, you know, what we'll do, just to make sure that everything is clean, we'll go back to John, and we'll go back to the village, and we'll get all of those at one time, give it to you, and, and we're going to have that discussion.
And then the, the village water pressure will be sufficient for what we're using?
Yeah, we have plenty of pressure, because the pressure tank is up on the hill, and we're tying directly into that eight-inch line that feeds up to the, actually, twelve-inch line that was, to, to the pressure.
I have a question about the eco cabin that's around the three existing ponds. They are, they're deep within the buffer around these water bodies, and that buffer is part of the regulated areas covered by our wetlands law. I would have to assume that the location of those cabins is currently approximate. Typically, the, the planning board looks at the specific location of anything proposed to be within a buffer, and right now, it's not even possible, I think, to get at some of those areas, having been over there last week.
No, it's definitely, but no, they're more than approximate. They, they were all done in concert with the topo maps of the property, and also poultry survey that we did. So we, we cited those, we cited, we spent a good amount of time going and citing it in the building units. So what, I mean, I can't say that something we move over a couple feet to accommodate, maybe, and we're in the field, and we decide we want to, I don't know, shift something in a very small way, that's not impossible, particularly with respect to the trees, because we're going to be trying to work within, within all of the existing trees as much as possible, but they're not, they're not just plot there.
Well, I, I know they're not just plot there, but I'm suggesting they're approximately from the point of view of approval by the planning board. You know, you're going to require a wetland permit, is my understanding, am I correct, Michael?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, but we, we really, we have cited those, we have cited those laws.
But those are, if they're all within the fifty-foot buffer zone for those wetlands, then one of them, where, where do we stand with that?
They are, they are within the buffer.
Okay, and it looks like they're entirely within the...
I believe so, there's, there's some, uh, perhaps it's another, the, the contradiction there is only, as I understand it, as I recall, at least two, and possibly all three of those ponds were created a few years back, we had a situation...
Yeah.
The whole hills were let in, created the dams, and then the, the renovation came that we were supposed to approve this to do that, we were supposed to approve this, whoever did that took the approval, and it went through quite a long process at that time, where of course, there was things like that, things that are engineering grounds and what the dams were.
Yeah.
Whether they were made of, or constructed, whether they were properly developed to, basically, the function has proper means, and I think at the conclusion of that, the proper permit was then issued once the planning board, the art engineers, and through, and so many groups like that were satisfied, and indeed, what was done was done properly, so that they would, they would be done. Our zoning law, not wetland law, our zoning law exempts man-made features approved by the planning board, you know, aesthetic features approved by the planning board, yeah, it does.
Actually, I have the language, and I'm not sure I heard it. May I read it?
Absolutely.
All right. Um, exempted, no wetlands on site will be directly impacted by this, I'm sorry, reading the ones that echo what I'm hearing. Okay, this is saying what is regulated, and this is, um, section eighty-seven of the wetlands law, and the section that you're referring to says, within the one hundred feet of the mean-high water mark of any pond, reservoir, or other water body in excess of a quarter acre of water surface area, provided that the pond, reservoir, or other water body has not been created as a site element which was earlier subject to site plan or subdivision plat review and approval by the town planning board. So, as I understand it, these ponds were created, right, and then eventually a permit was gotten.
Subsequent to the creation.
Right, and then, a site plan was produced, right, after the pond, ponds were created.
The site plan was concurrent with the approval of the, of the creation of the ponds. In other words, the site plan approval had to be part of the, what you might call it, the, basically, getting permission subsequent to actually having done the work, the site plan approval is part of that. They didn't just get a wetland permit, the site plan had to be...
What site plan are you referring to?
The site plan, when these were found, they had been created in the zoning enforcement office, and then they were re-sited, that there was something that had happened, what was supposed to align, part of the remediation was to get proper permit from the planning board to actually install those three ponds.
Right.
And that happened subsequent to, once the different engineering works, that is what we done, that's when the site plan was approved, not prior to that.
The site, the site plan covering what?
The existence of the three ponds.
Okay. What about the site plan for this?
This was prior to, this was prior to any of this grassmere farm application.
That's what I'm saying.
It was prior to that.
I'm saying that they are not excluded by this portion of the wetlands law, because they were not created as a site element for this development.
They weren't created as a site element for the property at that time, they were not created for agricultural purposes, they were not created for drainage purposes, they were created as an aesthetic element for the property.
Right, but not for a country, actually.
They already existed.
So, once those ponds exist, then they're forever available for disalment within the buffer zone, because there is no buffer zone associated with this, this pond that was...
That's not what this says.
That's, that's how I read what that says, and I think if there's a question about that, I think that's something we take to the zoning enforcement officer, for her, for her, no, the zoning enforcement officer, that does not have the authority to interpret the zoning law, the E O L.
Okay. Also, going through the previous seeker conclusions, the book that you sent me, it says in there that a wetland permit will be required.
There are wetlands permits that are required for your kindness property, yes.
Right. Right.
But these are not wetlands.
It becomes, it becomes, once again, as I said, I think it maybe, once again, a great contradiction in the regulations that we follow. One would have thought that if they are considered, whether they're mapped as wetlands by, usually by their own court of schedule, suddenly it changes the whole, it can potentially change the whole way it's approached. But our zoning law doesn't speak to that. That's where it becomes a little bit of an issue.
The way I read this, and I think it's pretty clear, any pond that is yet to be developed, that, the pond that's not there yet, that will meet the criteria of this section, because it will be created as a site element.
Like a site.
As part of a site plan. But the three ponds that already exist do not meet this criteria.
Well, that's where we disagree. That's where we disagree, and I think that's something that they're part of, to submit to the zoning enforcement officer.
Yeah, and then I just, I do want to make the point, and I know this is predated here involving the board, but we did an exhaustive secret review at the start of this, and all of, and actually many more cabins were originally shown around these other ponds. And all of that was included as part of a very thorough environmental review. We actually designed these cabins specifically upon pure footings to protect the hydrology, because they're on, they're on slopes and they do, you know, they are above, they sit above as built state ponds. So we really pointed at three, three lengths to try to design something that would be very environmentally friendly. So it was really done in the context of that particular situation. We put a lot of thought into it. And certainly, and we've always presented that to the board, really, as I said, with the original layout of these cabins, so we, we shot them over.
John, if I would recommend to you, as far as water, worst case, the village says, no.
Yeah.
You've got Dutchess County Water running a line on Route 9 as far as South Mill Road. I don't know how far above South Mill Road, actually goes down to the South Mill Road.
Oh.
Okay, so you might want to start thinking about that as an alternative plan.
Sure. Yeah, I appreciate that.
It goes into the old, around the country school, the line. And it goes down, if you go down South Mill, there's a few hickorys in there. It'll go almost down to the Lismon Hill Creek.
Okay.
I'm sure it's a small line, but, you know.
And the water piece of the village is, is pretty easy. They've got the capacity.
Oh, yeah.
And they're excited to see those, you know, the improvements that we've been making. We've basically, you know, I think everybody, when we've had the meetings with John Fenton and the village engineer, everyone's in, the mindset is that this is very difficult. That they are going to want to access storage capacity for storm surge that the, that the plant that we're going to be ready to pay for. But it, it all, the spirit of it is very much like, this is something that, that can happen. And the capacity is there, and they're just, they're asking for some improvement, just so they.
Unfortunately, that letter, the first letter, which I did not employ.
Oh, you're talking about the still one, the last?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, and then, well.
The tone was not.
No, and I think, and I, trust me, they were, they, well, they, they made it very, very clear to us that they, that are getting access to those services was not at all contingent on that, is what I'm saying.
Well, I would just make the point that the letter that asserted this at the beginning was directed to the planning board.
Yeah.
They have not withdrawn that letter. They have not written a second letter correcting what they stated.
Yeah.
So you might encourage them.
Yeah, we can, we can ask for that, and that they.
I think, I think if they've changed their minds, and they're now in a position where they're actively working with you on this, and their original concerns have changed, it would be important to have a letter from them stating that in an inaugural meeting. Because right now, the only thing we have on record is the letter based on us.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we'll, George will work on that tomorrow.
Just getting back to that large pond that you built. You say it's going to be fed by two existing springs. If that's the case, why isn't it already a lake?
Why is it the pond already there?
Why is it not already a lake, if it's fed by, I mean, if it's.
Because right now, there is a farm field channel that was cut through the valley many, many, many years ago, when the original people owned the property.
Okay, so we would just take damming that channel up?
No, no, we're not actually damming the. So right now, there is a stream, you can see it barely here, that comes in, goes along this edge, and it's back out here. And there's another little finger that does this. This little finger, this is where the, the little artesian well is, that comes out here with all the stone walls. The other artesian well is up here, this feeds into here, this feeds into here, feeds into here, which then drains down through here. So we are, in this little area here, this little finger here, we are under half an acre of disturbance of the existing drainage channel that goes through the property. It's not a classified stream, it's just a wetland at the back of a wetland, a wetland stream. It's just an emergency. It's farmed agriculture on both sides of it right now. And so we're going to the artic board of engineers, and we've already submitted an initial sketch for them. And they indicated it's a commercial activity in H Y, apartment 39, is what we need in order to do it. And then what we're going to do is, we're going to excavate these areas here so that we can, to the water, and we do create a pond.
Okay, so you're digging down?
Yes, we're digging, we're digging down to get to the elevation.
So the water table is just below the surface now?
The water table, that is in here, but yes, the, you know, we have a, we've done test pitting out here last year. In most cases, we've dug down 6 to 8 feet, and that's about where we hit the saturated soil line. So it's a perfect depth for us, really. We have all gray and brown clay, so we'll need a liner. It will, it will be probably very easy to make that pond successful.
And where would we excavate the material from?
We have another piece of site on the site, which is a little to the south of this, down in here, which we've identified as an area that we want to burn up anyway. So we're going to take that material, we're going to use it to burn in that. We have no archeological clearance on that. And the whole idea of that burn is to use that as a way to do sound attenuation for the highway noise that comes off of that dump. So that's why we're going to do that, then it'll be shaped in landscape.
Okay, thank you.
I think it was from board members at the present time. Jim?
I'd like to say, it's a secret.
Well, look, I want to open this up to the public. Any questions anyone in the public has, and they'd like to share with us the same thing?
Thank you.
Yes?
I want to thank you for addressing a lot of my questions, the presentation, what I'm looking for. I had sent a letter to the board identifying things that concern me. We live right across the street from where the Mill Road Gate possibly is going to exit on the main terrace itself. It's a very big concern for me, especially with the new cabinet going up. But I'm just wondering if indeed there can be some kind of map thing that does show the parcels on the other side, in relation to the parcels, these parcels. I think that all my neighbors would like to see exactly how this thing had their history. So I would know if that's.
So the question is, a figure that shows how the parking would look in that field?
No, no, no. If you're, say you go on parcel access, and it delineates parcels. If you could just, that kind of map could be created, then we'd just show what you're proposing.
Yeah, we can provide that to the board, and we could actually post it on the town website if you want. But we have a map that has the tax parcels all on.
Right.
It's part of the original submission from a few years back.
And it shows the proposed changes.
What we can do, it's an older version of the, it was the Phase 1 master plan, but it has all of the tax parcels, all the names on it, all the lot lines of the property, and we can just show the new layout on it.
Okay. Along with the back entrance, is that what you're saying?
One of the main things to point out to everybody, and I'll do it here on this figure, is that really the only addition to the area that was previously being disturbed is the addition of this small, you know, 10-foot parcel here, but the backside of this is to be developed. This is all remaining as open agricultural field, although we're going to change it to a horse field. And then, the only other area is this area down here where we're going to build the pond. All of the other areas, this area here, this area here where the building is, the main entrance here, and all of the land that surrounds the main stake grounds, are all areas that were already included in the Phase 1 plan that was done before.
I think the point that she's making, and correct me if I'm wrong, is pretty much the same point that Sharon was trying to make, which is, when you're looking at this, you cannot see the relationship between your properties and the adjacent neighbors. It's, it's not shown.
It's unfortunate that this is a question that we had anticipated and didn't have prepared for, because it would take me, literally, it would take me an hour to create the figure to give to you all. And it's the same as the figure that we had when we did Phase 1 the last, it showed our tax parcel.
Then just bring it out again.
Yeah, well.
People want to see that relationship.
More than happy to. The next time that we're here, we will present that figure. Absolutely.
And speaking of lights impacting when you go outside, leaving the property, what's on the outside, Route 9 compared, anything?
Now, there really isn't in that stretch of Route 9.
I believe you have a question?
Yes, just regarding the traffic.
If you just identify who you are, we just need to.
Oh, Arthur Eisenberg. I live next door to Beverly.
Thank you.
And kind of down a little bit, and right across from the cemetery. And cemetery itself gets quite a lot of traffic, which I didn't realize when I moved into the house across the street. But there is a lot of traffic on Mill Road. And I would feel a lot more comfortable about the parking area and the shuttle service if I knew that the shuttles, when they left the parking area, would leave via Route 9 rather than coming out onto Mill Road.
Yeah, yeah, no, definitely. The idea, no, no traffic is exiting onto Mill Road.
Not even the shuttle, that's great.
No, 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 that's just an entrance to the shuttle. And it's, as I said, it's really just, it's a much nicer experience. The first thing people are going to notice when they're coming from the drain is just, is that, that's what they're going to be, so we want to keep that experience as nice as we can, but that shuttle drive, we can certainly exit on Route 9.
Right. Probably entering, then might need to change it.
You're talking about the, the drive?
Yeah.
No, I just was saying earlier, it might be that we don't have to. It was brought up as a concern that people had about, about saving.
Excuse me, just, just, please identify who you are, just as we can. Actually, if you could come up to the microphone, just, there will be a recording on forever. Just to like his name and address that.
Hi, Suzanne, calling 206 Mill Road.
Thank you.
Right, so as I was saying, so you were saying that the, this is just going to be an entrance and not an exit?
An entrance, and only for, only for cargo.
Only for the shuttles?
Yeah.
And so my question was then, why would you need to change the road? Because you're going to change, I was going to ask you again.
Yeah, and as a public, as a public entrance, and, and we can take a look at it.
Let me, if I can, let me just talk about how that entrance evolved. The angle that the road comes in right now is actually, the historic road, Mill Road when it came down, the alley of trees continued right down into the site. So that's why this alignment is right aligned with Mill Road. The issue at the time was that the turning movement, if you were coming from the south heading north and tried to make that turn to come in, you couldn't make this turn easily as a guest visiting the site. We, you know, haven't even really thought about modifying it or leaving it the way it was, because we had just assumed, when we did the original analysis, that the town would still want it to be an entrance drive that would accommodate standard truck, traffic vehicles. We can go back and look at the other thing, the other one. But the reason why this was located where it was is the house, the two historic homes that were originally part of this estate, actually, once it's here, and once it's here, and this is a lot lined in between them. And so, right now, the way that this driveway would be lined up is it would never have, if there were ever lots of cars that went out that way, it would never shine lights into those, into those rooms. After we went through the last, let me finish this, because I know you're worried about that. After we went through the last site plan approval, we agreed, we won't do that. We're just going to have it as a one-way in only. And we're still proposing that. It's a one-way in only. And it's even less use, much, much less use than would have been before, because before, guests all could come in that way. Now, no guests are coming in that way. And the only thing that the shuttle is doing is it's picking people up at the train station and bringing them here. All right, so that's going to be a small percentage of actually all of the, of the visitors that we have here. So the traffic on Mill Road is going to be significantly less. Keeping the historic drive the way it was, as long as we can make sure that a shuttle can actually navigate that turn to come back around when it comes from the train station, I don't see why we wouldn't try to do that, because that's a nicer feel for us, too. It's the historic pillars don't have to be new, we can work with any.
The other alternative is to bring for the village and then, it was about 9 inch or whatever.
Right, right. So I think overall, this is actually a much better scenario for all of the residents along the road than it been was in what was previously moved.
I just wanted to say that there is no way that you, what you just said was correct. When you get to the end of the drive, the current drive, you are in between the two historic houses. Where, where you're proposing to go to an entrance is much further west, south?
Maybe south, maybe south.
Yeah.
Well, we took the aerial map, which I can also bring the next time, too, to show you. But we use that aerial at the tax maps and the property license. So the next time that I bring that figure that shows all of those, we'll have it, and I can show it for you. But again, I think the way this conversation is going tonight, if we can keep the drive the way it was and not do this 90-degree turn, I think as an applicant, you know, maybe preferring that also.
How big is your shuttle?
Keeps the historic look to it.
What's that?
How big is the shuttle?
Oh, they're going to be, they may even be just SUVs. I mean, we're talking about, as, as, as big as you would be a van. So we're not talking about like big four buses going around, we're talking about smaller vehicles.
I can give you a question.
Yes, Caldora, and I'm a.
If you can speak on the mic, just have it recorded. At the microphone. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Caldora, and I do a 399 in the world. My one question is, is what is the plan for lighting, like, street, I mean, like, to light up that road?
You're talking about the, the entrance?
The entrance on Mill.
Yeah, there's a dock in Mill. I mean, John can, he can speak to it, but he, yeah.
So, as with everything on this plan, the intent is to make it feel very existing country and residential in scale and nature. On the historic drive, we've had two conversations on it. One is that, do we need light at all? And I think the answer came back, yes, we do, because we're going to have people that are going to be walking it at night, when they come back, we need to make sure that they're securely on it. So then the other question was, does a shuttle drive or need to have lights, streetlight level? And the answer to that is, we really know, also. And so what's being looked at right now is either a lower historic bothered kind of lighting that goes along it, or potentially just uplighting into the trees that will give us enough light along the roadway. But there will be no big, you know, village-like poles and lights all the way down the road. We're very sensitive to the idea of not having a night sky issue and not necessarily adding a, a really bright entrance that comes in there that is never historically made.
I'll just, I'll just take this opportunity to mention that we don't allow uplighting in our land.
Well, that, I guess we won't have uplighting.
Yeah, but we will, as, as allowed by code, our, what we really want to do is keep this as low-key as possible. And I know before, what it was, was an entrance, I think there was a requirement about higher lighting. I think if it's just our shuttle drive, or hopefully, we can really minimize that. But we want to keep it feeling, you know, to estate residential in scale and feel everything else.
Your question there, I'll have to go.
Arthur Eisenberg, 68 Mill Road. Just got a question about how many people there can be. We're out of very big town, and are you going to be a percentage fearful? Will that be a percentage, like 10% of the population or what?
No, no, the town's 8,000 people, right?
Okay.
So, so. So we have a total of one hundred and ten customers. Just to put it in context, yeah, the beat means, I think, eighty. So, I mean, we're not, you know, no, this is...
You're big, but not huge.
Yeah, and, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Yes. I'm keeping live, and I think I learned of this. But anyway, I have three questions concerning the property. Mick Crawford and I are neighbors, and since this has been, since the ponds went in, our pond has disappeared. And there were some talks several years ago about mediating that situation, which hasn't happened yet. So that's a concern. Our old water course, Fallsburg Creek, has changed significantly since the two or three ponds.
Yeah, the issues though have nothing to do with our site. There's some issues that are up that creek that definitely, something definitely happened up there.
Some takes up the creek.
But honestly, we had the guys walk that whole thing. And it's, there is a small, like a small stream that runs from the bottom of the property that has nothing to do with those ponds. They're completely unconnected. And there is no way that the kind of volume that you'd have down there had anything to do with us. I mean, there was some sort of an event that happened. We could talk about this separately.
Yeah, we could talk about it separately.
We'll talk about that separately, yeah, yeah, yeah.
The other concerns that I have are towards cinema, which I think you mentioned because I do run the cinema that's already in town, so that's concerning. And the little tents or cabins that are in south and slightly west, looks like of the stone barns. I think will also are of concern to me in terms of nighttime party, you know, because I think I'm going to be right in the line of sound.
Oh, here, if we can, let's take, if we can look at, if we just go back to the main plan, I think you can understand is how this cinema is small.
I feel very guilty saying.
No, 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 the cinema is small. It can be used also for conferences. So this is going to give a place where people can stand and talk, so people can go to group together. But I think it's what, forty seats in it or something? And it's just more for people that are staying on site. But this, to, this, to, I think, to point it out just a little bit. Yeah, yeah, right here. So basically, where you guys are is like, if you keep going, it's like here. This is all very close in the cinema lines. And the whole property is about five hundred acres. And it's two miles from the beginning of the property to the end of the property. You guys are at the end of the property. This is the very beginning of the property. So we're talking about, you know, probably a mile to your house. And that's between, you know, and there's several tree lines and things like that between the few. So I can't imagine that any, anyone's having people walking back and forth and looking through that far.
Well, the other thing too is this, where the yurts are, which are, you heard the term the landmines, or camp. The yurts are down in the field, down in the lower area, when the barns, stone barns are used for the animals, they're way up. And so anything that you could have ever heard from that going across the valley is not something you'll have. Those are going to be converted into interior space now. And these facilities down here are going to be a higher-end facility. So if somebody is obviously making a lot of noise right there, trust me, security on the site is going to make sure that they stop right away because the people that are also there with them, they don't want to hear that. So I would not think that that's all going to happen.
Any comments from the public who proposed this tonight? Yes.
I don't sit on the road, but I walk every day on the other side of Route 9. So one of my concerns is the red construction. You're saying that the entry on Mill Road won't be, having red open. But is that going to be used? Will the trucks are kind of, is it already gone through the night or?
We're going to establish this as a concern happens, the new items come out.
I think by code from the, going to be to main entry and construction has to go.
And also, you were talking about the possibility of a sidewalk or a bike lane. I walk there every day. It's very narrow. So I can understand, we stopped through the road in a car, but...
Yeah.
Can you talk into the microphone, please?
Oh, I'm talking about walking on Mill Road and how narrow it is. And so the idea of having any kind of walkway, there really is a room there between the entrance to Grassmere, entrance, and Route 9. Plus, there are access, so even though I like the idea of sidewalks, it's really very narrow.
Yeah, and this is just so, you know, this is something that came up from the village to us. Not, this isn't something that we asked for, it's something that they brought up. So we're trying to accommodate their requests as best as possible. We're the same reaction, which is it's a very difficult room to try to establish any kind of light lane because it's just not in space for them. And there's a bunch of old gray trees that line both sides of the road. So to do anything like that, you can take it down and be all right with that.
The only other comment I would have is, you were talking about the state border, which is lovely. Horses are lovely, but may be limited from riding all the way on the property? There's really not much room for riding horses on Mill Road either.
No, no, no one's going to be riding horses on Mill Road. There is, it will be for the property, then there's also the Landsman Kill Bill Association has got a series of trails that connect property, actually, that's not one. So the idea is that that would be an option as well. But now Google would have people ride their horses on Mill Road.
Okay.
Suzanne?
Suzanne Kelly, 206 Mill Road. I'm also the administrator of the running cemetery, so these are cemetery sessions, both which I asked you about, but I didn't, you were clarifying. So in your conversations with the village about the water, you're going to move the water out of the cemetery?
No.
No?
No, no, but we have a...
The water line that goes through the cemetery to Grassmere?
I don't think there's a, is that a...
Yeah, it goes right through the cemetery.
Yeah.
So we're going to be putting a brand-new water line into the site. Water line coming into the site is going to be a six-inch. The existing water line that is on the road, which is a four-inch line, all the way up to the historic drive, will be replaced back to Route 9 with a new six-inch line. Everything that extends from that point further south will stay just the way it is. The line that comes onto the cemetery property, it'll probably be just abandoned in place because that line can't be used for service to the property anymore. All right, so as we do all of the details of that, we'll have to go through the Department of Health and the DPC for our board permitting for that. And at that time, we'll work out whether or not we actually have to tap it at the street or whether we can tap it back in the property. But either way, we won't be affecting the cemetery property itself.
And then the other question is about the electric. So you're going to, are you going to get all of your electricity from Route 9? Because right now, it runs through the cemetery.
So yes, all of the power for the site, we're actually investigating. We have an application in with Central Hudson right now for new electric service to the site. We'll be bringing in pre-phase power off of Rugan, and so it will be totally independent of what comes in off of Mill Road.
And so all that will be removed?
I have to go out and see what you mean by all of that has to be removed, so, because I can't come.
Assuming that the power lines are all going to be unwound, these care...
Yes, all of the rest of them. There'll probably be a line that comes from the pole with the drive, and then from there, we'll go with it.
And that will come along with the new drive?
It may correspond with the new drive. We're working with Central Hudson right now to determine. They're the ones that will tell us where, what pole they want to come off of and where it will come onto the property. So we're beholden to them.
So you might have, got to be lots of the woods as well?
Well, we have, if you recall, there is the existing old farm drive that goes down and further down on Route 9 way to the south, there's actually another entrance point down there. So we're...
There are two entrances, aren't there?
There's actually three entrances.
Really?
Yes.
Arthur Eisenberg, 68 Mill Road. I just want to let you know that the cell phone service where I am, which is right near the property, is terrible. If you can somehow augment the cell phone service, I would be glad.
Yeah, yeah, this is developed, my property here, same issue.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Michael Heiser, you're on Mill Road. I have a question similar to what Suzanne was asking about the cemetery, the water lines coming through the cemetery. And I appreciate that the ability to be linked with this community sometimes. But now, what I'm concerned about is the archaeological, the danden in place. The water lines, if you're here in the cemetery property per se, but we have a grave to build. It doesn't force lines, it's not, I don't think, but it is a cemetery that we're using there, cemetery, right?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I'm sorry.
We'd like not to have the in-place lines, not given the cemetery acting as a cemetery.
Again, if we have an existing water line that runs through the cemetery and there are activities in the cemetery already, whether it's graves or other things, we can't really take that line up because we can't disturb that. We would most likely be required to take and tap that, see Mill Road at that point, and terminate that, and cut that line back to the right way. And then on the other side of the property, that line goes where we terminate that also. In order to do any work on the cemetery, first of all, we'd have to get clearance that we wouldn't disturb anything, unless there are any graves, things like that. It'd also need easements to do that work because we own that land. And then there would also be other, I'm sure, other regulations that have to be compliant with. I would strongly recommend that that just stay where it is. It's just a four-inch line, it's five feet down, it's... The water lines in general will be five feet down so that they're not, so they don't freeze in. Okay.
The other question I have against the cemetery, that would be, for extent of anything, is required to have on the natural burial section of the cemetery, result in wooded block, because it's out there. And we should go back.
No, we're not disturbing, we're not taking any, we're not doing any disturbance. None of all, are you talking about on the cemetery property itself?
Well, yeah, it's all wooded. The cemetery connects with the children.
Right, yeah, we're not touching, this is all, this is...
Yeah, yeah, well, that's, you know, that's the, the area you're talking about.
No, it's not. It's burial grounds all the way down.
Well, we're not, well, anyway, we're not, we don't know, so.
I will tell you that when we did the archaeological study, and if you want to go back and look at the secret document, the archaeological study did test bidding all the way through every area that we are looking at. And we didn't find anything, so we're with no potential for grave sites or anything like that. And in addition, there is a stream that comes through.
It's an instrument stream, yeah.
And we are all to the east of that.
Do you have a question for that?
We are, yeah, we're outside of that for the, for the army.
Yeah, really, all we'd be doing is we'd be thinning out, basically, there's small trees throughout the property, some great old state trees, which is all state ground. We're going to be keeping all of those and then just getting rid of some of the growth in this area. And that's actually the extent of all of it, in terms of that kind of site work right there. And then, you know, these are sort of these little tree houses. So the idea is they sit in here, but they're on our side of the green, and the green goes down. So we clean this area up right here. This is the old, an old territory.
Other questions or comments from the public this evening? Yes.
I'm just curious, so all the parking is only going to be in that one lot?
Well, there's also, there's some parking right here. And this is more, this is where all the deliveries go and stuff like that. And this is the least, this staff parking that's out here. And then this is guest parking up in this area.
One other question, which I'm not sure is related to planning board or anything, but what are these structures that you're going to be using for guests? What do that mean to have accessibility?
Yeah, we're going to be compliant with all of the code issues. I mean, that's something that we've already looked at, the manor house, and there's the A E everybody. So we're going to, we're going to, we're going to need to comply with all of it.
Okay.
And then that's, so we will.
Are they going to make those roof scan cans?
Why, they don't need it.
No, I know they don't need it.
And then, of course, there'll be tree houses.
Yeah, right.
Jonathan, the staff is then to hook it in to wherever they're going from that parking lot?
Yeah, the staff, the staff would be coming from this parking lot. And then, I mean, there could be some staff parking that's integrated in there, so maybe, I don't know.
Were they walking? That was his question. Are they hooking it in?
Oh, yeah, they're hooking it in there. Or, I mean, if they can set up in such a way that, you know, somebody comes out and be able and takes a bunch of men, they'll be able to do that. But the idea is that, yeah.
As you know, we're going to be continuing the public turn, obviously, we still have plenty of things to do tonight, but I think the planning board needs to do is determine precisely how, which is the handling of the secret issue. Tipton, do you have a long-term idea for this, for the new, basic new project, as you had presented to us? There's a lot of changes here, additions, and also a lot of deletions from what we originally saw. Very often, what you would do is we would take the part one, and then we would do part two and part three, and make a determination as to whether it's a pos deck or a neg deck. It's a type one action, you just have no condition to make that. What we did originally with this project was you drafted a DEIS for the original project. We went over it from a scoping standpoint, we found it to be completely, I mean, not with that. And then you submitted that, that would review, there's some changes made, and then we prepared the final DEIS. Given the magnitude of changes here, it seems to me, that's what the planning board, how they want to deal with this, that that may be the very best way to go through this, rather than go through the other way, going through part two and part three, and then finding the major significant issues, and then going through the DEIS and certain issues. To the extent that you would be able to take the original final environmental impact statement and make what changes would be pertinent to the changes you've made here, but it'd be deletions from it all. And for one thing, I found interesting in the binding statement was the conclusion that the village sewage treatment plant did not have the capacity to deal with your project. In the interim, after that original, we now have a new spa in the village, which I think is fifty-two rooms, something like that. We have those three of the gardens, which is of course also piped into that. So now we know that, so now there is capacity, which I think is fine. But I think my own feeling, but as I say, it's something the board, I wish to proceed with this. If you were to be able to modify the final DEIS that the planning board adopted to respond to the changes in your planning, both the deletions and the additions of what you're doing, I realize you have to wait till you hear from the village about the water and sewer, things like that, or there's some other issues that still are outstanding. That, for me, would be a more appropriate way to address this project at this time. But as I said, that's my opinion, and I'm not going to speak for the rest of the planning board. But we do need to decide tonight how you want to proceed with this. Yeah, Jimmy, perhaps?
Well, I do agree with that approach. I think that that seems to be the way to go based on changes that we're looking at and the information that's documented previously, and how we can carry that forward.
So Michael, what we did the last time, we had a discussion about whether we would do a supplement at the IS, which is what we're talking about here, supplemental FGIS. Or what we had done at the time with Annabees is we did a filing statement, line-by-line comparison. If you remember, the filing statement was almost as long as the FGIS. So I don't, procedurally, the information that you would get from that process would be the same that you get from doing a supplemental FGIS. But the timing then becomes a little different, with the most of, it would be almost as if we went through an amended full environmental assessment here, where the board can still make its determination of a negative declaration. And the only reason I'm saying that is just for, for every time, because if we do the FGIS, then we are beholden to do all of the notifications, time requirements, everything else that you would have for a full environmental impact statement, and that could be a six-month process.
Well, at this point, as I say, we can't require that you do that because the typical process is to review part one and part two and part three, and at that point, determine whether or not we want the DEIS pertaining to this particular project.
But I get the sense though that, right? But I get the sense though that right now, given the information, that that's the order that we need, even if we did part two and part three, to lead towards us doing a supplement.
They would, they would clearly have to be, because there really are some specific changes here, and many things have altered on this property, there are earth facility conditions that are probably missing from the whole book, there's some significant changes in the ground around about how things are going to be done on this site, really, a lot of the study work that would be required for this have been done, and we won't be taking use, once again, if it's still pertinent, but I think it's critical that we make sure that what we do here is complete, because we don't want to find ourselves in a position that overlooks something that we really need to address.
Okay, Michael, if I may make one comment, going through the GEIS process again, as we just said, at least a lot of procedural delay, but then also required to go through the finding statement process, so we have to allow common time in the middle of the finding statement, could we just amend the finding statement, submit it to you, if you feel that there's a pos deck, basically, that we need to have a new finding statement? All the information would be the same, but it would just collapse that process into one step, which is you have the EAF, which has all the additional environmental review in it, we can give you an amended FGEIS, and then it's your decision whether it is adequate, but at least we can take that next step from where we are now. If you need any more information, you can get it.
Yeah, I downloaded the one that I have, you filed.
Thank you.
I could have more. Yeah, thank you for that, though.
Well, we're gonna have to do it anyway, it obviously is noticed, all of the different involved agencies anyway, because of the changes in the project. I've already had calls from the health department today, so about exactly how we're proceeding this sewer damage project, so I've already had that due, interested in, okay, what's going on here, because they, of course, approved the separate system, they approved that sewer disposal system. So since we are the lead agency in this coordinated environmental review, given the changes here, the other involved agencies obviously have to be noticed of the changes to this project, I can see how we can get around doing that.
We're gonna have a revision of the FGEIS to you in a few, in a couple of weeks, so that you have that at the September meeting, to decide whether it's adequate, and we can turn that into an FGIS findings, rather.
Well, it's not just for us to determine that it's adequate, we also have to, something we have to circulate that with the other involved agencies to see if they're finding that, to say, if SHPO has any concerns, if DTC has any concerns, we already know the health department has concerns. So it's something that, it's coordinated environmental quality review, it's not just us.
I understand. So all I can say is we try to get the FGIS amended, or supplemental, whatever we call it, back to you as soon as possible.
And then that would be a lead and circulated to the involved agencies, along with the revised EAF.
Michael, have you, well, did you ask for the, the, if you have the EAF application from July 1st, this board has said that it would, have you made the request to be lead agency again? We're just assuming that you are because it's a continuation of the application? No, the only reason I'm asking is that we could do it in two steps, we could do your thirty-day request to the other agency to be lead agency, and then after that, we could submit a supplemental to address the way that we can normally.
We could certainly do it that way, so that the circulation goes on about the new changes, what the...
So that at least all changes, you should see what our approach is right now.
I just want to make sure we go through the steps properly, and I'm not a secret expert, but I did look up supplemental, and it appears to be, and part of what I'm getting is, we already approved what was done previously, the whole thing is done, it looks like the supplemental comes in, we're talking about addressing, well, the other thing, actually, it wasn't addressed, it was not adequately addressed in the GEIS, but all that's already done and approved, so I'm a little confused about whether we're gonna do a supplemental or not by law, I don't want to, I want to make sure we do the process properly for the first time, so we don't have to go back and, but, you know, revisit it. So again, I'm not a secret expert, I'm just trying to figure out what we need to do to make sure we go right and get it through, but I, I don't know.
Well, I think we're talking about the same thing, you have GEIS, if it's revised, we'd be essentially the same as supplemental, but GEIS, I mean, they're addressing the same information, right, same format, basically, just take what we've already done once before in 2015, take the original, then take 2015's, and show the differences now, what's addition, what's additional, and what additional environmental review is needed, the new features and what has been taken out. So we're showing you the changes over time, so we can call it supplemental, because it's essentially adding a few new features I've deleted, and that would be supplemental, whatever response.
I think, I think Jim's point is that, he's sort of reading the laws and reads it, basically, the supplemental is because we missed something the first time, or we didn't adequately cover it the first time, but in this case, we're actually dealing with parts of the project which did not exist the first time, so it's not something that we missed or failed to adequately review, it wasn't there to be viewed, so...
No, I understand, but supplemental also addresses additions to a project, if you're going through that section, as long as you're comfortable, that's where, I just want to make sure we don't call it supplemental and find somewhere down the road, we're, we're issuing, you know, if we're doing the same process, the procedure, I think that's okay, just my read of supplemental, the word or the term, is just to refer to us not doing something properly the first time, since it's all approved, I don't want to, you know, say or imply that there was something that wasn't upgraded, we already have it for plan, this is, you know, an amended change plan, I just want to make sure we, we hit the right steps with the right terminology, and I do think we need to re-advertise the thirty days to make sure, because it's already been approved, and I'm not a secret expert, so I'm not... Well, the only issue is, the first review was a generic EIS, final generic EIS, and typically supplemental comes in on a generic, could be more specific, like here we've taken this to a new stage, we have much more detail, we have some additional features, some things have changed, so we're supplementing, we would be supplementing the GEIS with more detail, that's usually how the supplemental works, so...
I think the point you're raising, I think it's an interesting one, but, and I may misunderstand this myself, I'm not a secret expert either, but that once a project is approved, then therefore the lead agency, capacity of the lead agency is no longer, in fact, it's approved, it's done, and that's that. You, as I say, just, as I say, from my opinion, I'm not, I'm not speaking to the rest of the board, that there's so many significant changes here, that we're basically talking about coordinated environmental quality review again, for a project that has, that is not the project we originally approved, portions of it are, significant portions of it are not, and therefore, I'm not entirely sure that we actually are still lead agency of this proportion of proposals, simply because we approved for the, accepted the final, the final environmental exit and the findings statement that I signed off on.
It's the same, in overall scope, it's the same hundred and ten lodging units that was originally proposed and gone through secret.
But there are different places, very different structures.
Which is what a supplemental is usually used for. So if, if we don't want to call it supplemental for some reason, we can just say we'll revise the FGEIS to address all the changes, which is what I proposed initially, and then, and then I actually propose a, I mean, finding statement, but we have to go through that step too.
What in the process, I'm sorry, John, finish.
This would be that we will give you the FGEIS revised to show all the changes, skipping the determination phase, skipping determination phase, where you've got to make a determination of pos decks, and we do that, we'll just say right now, we'll do that, we'll give the FGEIS revised, and if you find it acceptable and approve it, then we do a findings statement, hopefully, pretty quickly after that, it reflects all those new findings.
I think John Lyons has got to be involved in that.
Oh, John, John is very involved.
So he would be able to tell us what we can, can't, should?
Yeah, I'm just, this is the evening I wanted to bring this up, because this is something we need to resolve, because it's obviously a very significant issue that we need to, we need to address and make sure that the book is completed, and I realize we're not gonna be able to, you're not gonna provide us with any final environmental exit at this time, because there are significant factors of this project that we don't know yet, how they're gonna pan out, so it's gonna take time for that to happen anyway, it would even be difficult for us to circulate right now, because there's some significant components of this project that aren't known at this point.
So is that a good, I'm just curious, I mean, there really are amazing issues that I don't know. A lot of what we've been looking at, what you've submitted, are what I would call really pretty pictures about ideas that will be transformed into your tent site or other things. At some point, I mean, they don't strike me as real when I look at them, it, it looks like a concept, it looks like this is what you think they might look like, but...
Malibu, did you see the civil engineering package that you submitted?
Well, this one?
On July 1st, we submitted a detailed setup site plan.
I saw the one that had the, this.
No, it was on July 1st, which was our official application, we submitted a full set of engineer drawings.
This is the July 1st one. So instead of what's in here, what you're suggesting to me is that in a different supplemental, I will see...
Our official application on July 1st was an engineer's drawing, a fully AF, and a new application.
So this?
Would tho, would those include all of the floor plans for buildings, I mean, we're at some mag levels on right now, so we've got full sets of floor plans for everything, that's all in there.
I guess I missed it.
Yeah, all the, all, yeah, what we did, we submitted, we submitted an expanded version of that, that, that means all the requirements for site recovery, so the building elevations, floor plans, all that stuff are included.
So the engineers, the engineering plans, they're on the front end or...
Are they, are they, like, what the tents are gonna look like as they're completed? Are they in here?
The tents, the tents are the one thing that we didn't consider, the floor plans, the tents, those are the, all the other buildings, including floor plans and building elevations, which is what's required.
So this, this building elevation here is exactly what you're proposing?
That, 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 we, we want to above and beyond what's required for the site review by including these renders, which really just, this is what, this is what you're taking.
But like, this stuff here, this is real?
That's, that's mood board right there, right, there's three sections, there's sort of like, there's, there's a look and feel of it, which cycles into actual building elevations and full sets of floor plans for everything.
Okay, so, but the mood boards?
Mood board stuff's just like, we threw it in there to give a sense of, so try to, try to give you guys more color, but what's required, what's required under...
Gives me color, but it doesn't give me a lot of substance.
Well, but, but what, I don't, like, if you go through, I assume that that's the final one, that includes all of the, all the building floor plans, and that includes all the building elevations, which is what we require.
Yeah, and it's just an awful lot to take in and look at, and I'm really interested in spending my time on what's real and not what's a mood element.
No, then, then focus on the floor plans and the, and the elevation, because they're all in there, a hundred percent.
And will, will we see the, the tent details?
If we need to get you guys tent details, I mean, that...
We really do need to have.
Yeah, you've got, you've got full details and everything else, that's, everything that's required for site plan application is, is in there, with the tents.
These are year-round tents?
What's that?
Year-round tents?
Uh, no, they're seasonal.
Seasonal tents, and what happens to them in a way?
Can we take them down, take them down, store them?
John's aware, of course, we have discussed it, and he will be getting back to us when he feels is the proper way to go, clearly, we can't go anywhere until we have everything nailed down, water, sewer, are you doing trails, all those different aspects, obviously, those are significant portions that we don't have that yet, and we need that, from what you see. John would recommend to us what we choose to do, it's, you know, pretty much our decision how we wish to do it, you know, if anyone else has anything I have to say right now, now's a good time, so, I've given my opinion, but it's just one member of seven.
I, I would just, I would be very concerned if I were you as an engineer about the short situation, because they tell you they may have the capacity, but there's a logistics nightmare involved, because I think the last sewer's line ends at the S at home.
Right, we have that laid out.
Okay, as long as you're comfortable with that.
We've already talked to John Benton and the village board, and the village board and the sewer department.
Because to the north of the village, they have a real serious problem, they've had it for years.
But where we are, we will be tying into the gravity of that, so we will...
I believe, your comments down here, Edna? No?
How, how?
On how you'd like to see us proceed?
I'd like to hear what John has to say.
Okay. Anyone else have anything they care to say at this point?
I would like to see when we do presentation of this, an overall property plan, which shows all the, the full back of the property, that's the effect in there.
Yeah.
At this point, we need to continue the public hearing. We thought it might be, how long before we can hear, we can sign off the village, we can actually come to us and say, we have water, we have sewer?
I would say that we cannot do it within the next three weeks, so you can't press on for two weeks, you have to press on for three.
Okay, so we're talking September 16th.
Again, you're confident, I mean, because we can go later, I know that that's not your preferred alternative, but the village...
You go in two weeks, if I can get the answer, but I'd rather, here for the conservative, that we'll do, we'll do four weeks.
Which will include...
We already have our contact with the village, so we're just, that's the next step.
And by then, John will tell us what, what he recommends we do as well, in terms of proceeding the secret, so we'll know about that.
Just so the, so the board knows, are engineering plans a bit advanced since our submission on July 1st, and put now, April 11th or March 1st, I mean, and it's, we weren't sure if Park House was gonna be brought on to do a review of that, who was going to start doing the review of the civil engineering drawings, and that's been determined yet?
Well, we use, you know, Roger Kowski's consultant, he's been working, in the past, we've been working with him on these things directly, so that...
Yeah, Ray is now, I think Morris is in that part of Park House, so that's what I figured, and that would be perfect if we could do it, because he has the history on him, and we had...
Well, that's what we, you know, we've done all along, so we can work directly with our engineering consultant, which helps to bring things along.
Because the other thing I can do is as we get information from the village on the water and sewer, I can share that with Ray also, and get his opinion on it, too, so we can pull everybody in, that really will eventually happen, yeah, on that.
Any more questions for this evening? Could I have your motion to continue this public hearing to September 16th at? At 7:30?
So late, no.
Second? On favor? Very good.
Thank you.
Okay. At this point, I need a motion to adjourn?
Done.
Second?
Second.
On favor?